In light of the circumstances out east with the tragedy that we had in America, I thought it was appropriate this evening to have a moment of silence before we begin the meeting. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence, thank you. And if you could join me for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak. Trustee Bond.
Here. All right. There's a quorum present this evening. We'll go ahead and move on to public participation this evening. First item is public comment. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the board this evening, please step down to the podium at this time. If you can, fill out your name, address, and contact information before or after you speak. Generally, we limit this to two minutes per topic or per person, so if you can keep your items brief, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Bobby. My mom lives at 101 Third Avenue. My question being is, I understand they're wanting to do half the street as far as blacktop, which we're not really happy about hearing that, first of all. We'd like a whole new street. I mean, it's been a long time, second of all. I mean, you know, we were here last week for that. But I do have a question. As far as the Third Avenue width, I mean, I actually measured it, and it's like 20-foot wide. Now, I measured Second Avenue, and that's like almost 27-foot wide. So I'm just questioning why. I mean, you know what I mean? I don't understand. First Avenue is same as Second Avenue. It's 26-foot something wide. You know, I don't know what the standards are, but there is a seven-foot difference, you know, in the width of that street. That's what I'm wondering. That's first and foremost. Second of all, you know, we'd like to see the whole thing redone, not just half. I mean, honestly. That's why we're here, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And since this is an item for discussion this evening, what I'll do is hold off staff from commenting on it this time, and we'll go through the full report later in the meeting. But if there's anybody else that... Walter.
My name is Walter Sattler. I live at 109 Third Avenue. It's my understanding that the agenda concerning Third Avenue, only half of what was brought up last week will be handled today, and that's the paving of the street and not the problem with the water drainage problem. So I guess I might ask... Can I ask a question? Later on, when Mike speaks, can we ask him questions? Or no?
No. If you do have questions now, he can try and answer them during that portion of the meeting. If he doesn't know the answer, if we don't know it, we'll get back to you on it.
Okay. One of the first questions I have is, Mike, when are you planning on doing the drainage problem for Third Avenue? Is that going to be on agenda in the near future?
It'll be in the near future. I can't give you a date tonight. I don't want to promise a date and then not have it. We're doing some investigation on the amount of water that runs off, and rather than put it on an agenda and not really have an update for anybody, I'd rather make sure we have some information. But as I did with tonight, I can email you and let you know what agenda it's going to be on.
Okay. Is it going to be within six months or a year?
I would say sooner than that.
Sooner than that? Okay. Well, that's great.
The intention would be to hopefully find, if we can find a solution, that we could do something yet this fall. Now, again, if you recall from the last conversation, we're just focusing on that corner up at the very southeast end where the water kind of comes into Third Avenue and how we can keep it from over-topping the ditch, or excuse me, over-topping the roadway and getting through the ditch system that's there. The third phase is looking at, possibly looking at, a storm sewer project, which is a much bigger project, much more investigation. That would happen over the course of the winter and be talked about as part of our budget, conversations with the board and the public. Public's invited those two.
Okay. I'll get back to the paving part of it. Now, it is my understanding, I've checked around, and I actually asked the village in one of the emails I sent, how long ago actually any work was done on the street other than, you know, making holes in it and patching the holes. And I've found it's been over 25 years that we've actually had any repaving or anything done as far as, you know, the street itself. So I think it would be about time to do the whole street and not cutting the street in half and only do one half, and then in the future do the other half. I think that would be silly. So that's the thing, the biggest thing I think everybody here is complaining about is the drainage and the business with the paving the whole street. And as far as the traffic patterns, we have a lot more traffic on Third Avenue than people think. We have...
That's why that road needs to be wider. Everything else is wide. I think that road narrow down.
Well, we have actually three bus routes that come through Third Avenue a day, you know, coming and going. We also have, we used to have a lot of police traffic there because the police station was around the corner, and they wore out our street also because they were coming through here all the time. So it is pretty wore out. And we have a little hill at the west end that should be taken care of. The paving should be better and so forth, and like Mike said, the drainage problem should be solved before there's a serious accident there. The only other thing I have to say is, our street has had horses on it since before April, and now they, with the main going in, they tore up a lot of people's front yards, putting in the pipes and so forth for the new, you know, water. And they haven't worked at all last week on Third Avenue. When are they going to come back and start working again?
I can answer that. I mean, part of it is waiting to review the pavement situation. So no restoration will be done in the yards until the pavement work is done, whether that's patching or an overlay. So if we have a decision here shortly, the next step will be to bring the asphalt guys back in and get them in there, and then we'll do the restoration. That's generally the last, one of the last items to be done.
Okay. And one other thing I just have to say, I appreciate you people getting on this case immediately. We were here last week, and we went through all the problems we're having and so forth. I'm not going to repeat any of that stuff because I'm sure by now everybody knows, you know, what problems we are having there, and most of you people actually took the time and drove over to the street to see what we were talking about, and I thank you for your handling this so quickly. Thank you.
Do you mind signing?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board this evening in the public comment portion? All right. Hearing none, I'll move on. There's a proclamation this evening that I'll read. Whereas the Village of Montgomery holds the health and safety of its teenagers and adults as a chief concern, and whereas through itcanwait.com, Facebook, text to pledge, tweet to pledge, and events, more than 1.8 million people have committed to never text and drive, and whereas 98 percent of American commuters know sending a text or email while driving is not safe, and whereas nearly 50 percent of commuters text while behind the wheel, and whereas more than 40 percent of commuters who text while driving reported the activity as being a habit, and whereas a Virginia Tech study showed those who send text messages while driving are 23 times more likely to crash, and whereas a driver that sends a text message while driving not only jeopardizes his or her safety, but also the safety of passengers, pedestrians, and other drivers. Therefore, I, Matt Brawley, Village President of the Village of Montgomery, hereby proclaim September 19, 2013, as Drive for Pledges Day in the Village of Montgomery, dated this day, the 17th of September 2013. Thank you. And we'll move on to item five this evening, which is items for discussion, our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year that ended April 30, 2013. So with that, I'll ask Jeff for his report on this.
Thank you, President Brawley. As he said, this is for a year that ended April 30, 2013. Our comprehensive annual financial report, what we commonly refer to as our audit around here, gives you a snapshot of what our financial position was as of April 30 and the results of operations for the year that ended on that day. Tonight, from Sickich, we have our auditors, we have Carrie Dittman, who is a manager there and is the lead on our project, so she's going to come and address you, and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jeff. And on behalf of Sickich, I wish to thank the Village President and Board for inviting me to come here today to present the results of the audit, where, as Jeff stated, the fiscal year ended April 30, 2013. There were two documents prepared during the audit process, the comprehensive annual financial report, which is the PDF that's up there, it's the thicker one that looks like this, and a second document, the auditor's communication to the Board of Trustees, that's the smaller, black-bound document. I have some comments prepared on the CAFER, this document up here, and once I am done running through those comments, I'd be happy to answer questions on either document. The first page I'd like to call your attention to is Roman numeral III, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It's about...
I'm working on it. You go right ahead.
Okay.
Pass it up. There, I'm almost there.
Almost.
You just keep going.
All right.
Don't wait on me.
This is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is a voluntary program, for those of you that are not familiar with the certificate, wherein the government prepares a set of financial statements that is significantly more detailed and comprehensive than is required to present under generally accepted accounting principles. The program is administered by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. It's a nationwide-recognized organization, and each report is reviewed by members of GFOA and also experts in the government, local government industry. And basically, what they do is ensure that the report meets a rigorous set of criteria. Of the approximately 7,000 units of local government in Illinois that could participate in this program, less than 300 actually participate and receive the award annually. The Village of Montgomery is one of these participants and has received this prestigious award for the last 10 years. The certificate that you see up there was presented to the village for the last audit, and the document that you see before you tonight is also going to be submitted to this award program, and we're expecting that the village will receive another 11th award. On page one, the audit opinion, it's presented on Sickich letterhead. It's the first item in the financial section. Yep. The independent auditor's report, like I said, it's presented on Sickich letterhead because this is our report to you on the village's financial statements, and it's the culmination of all of our audit work. Describes management's responsibility and the auditor's responsibility, and the ultimate expression is our opinion on the financial statements. On page two of this report, we give our opinion on the financial statements, that first paragraph under opinions, and we have, again, given an unqualified or unmodified opinion to the village, which is the highest level that an entity can receive as a result of their audit. Basically, it just means that the village's financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next section I would like to draw your attention to is Management's Discussion and Analysis, about two pages beyond here. The MDNA, as we call it for short, is prepared by the village management and provides a nice overview of the financial statements and highlights key changes that occurred in the village's financial position. If you're unable to manage to get through the entire audit report, which is fairly lengthy, this is a great source of information to basically get those key elements out of the financial statements. On page four is the statement of net position, and pages four through six present information of all the non-fiduciary funds of the village, so everything other than police pension and agency funds. And it's, these financial statements, these first three pages, are presented on a long-term or economic resources measurement focus using the accrual basis of counting, which basically means it includes all the long-term activity, capital assets, and long-term debt of the village. The focus of the statement is that bottom section where it says net position, which is further broken down into three categories, net investment in capital assets, restricted, and unrestricted. And basically, what that means is it's what's left over to use for future, you know, future purchases, future funding. The unrestricted is basically what the village has available for future spending, once you subtract off what's tied up in capital assets and restricted for specific purposes. And those amounts on that almost last line are $2,487.65 for governmental activities and $2,183.68, which is enterprise fund activities or business-type activities. The next statement is the statement of activities, again, presented on a long-term economic resource measurement focus. This statement includes things like depreciation and other things that are not included on the fund financial statements. The focus on this statement is the change in net position on the next page. The change in net position of the village is there on the third to the last line. So the village experienced a positive change of $4,477,751 in governmental activities and a positive $1,181 for business type, so a total positive change of about $5.6 million. The next statement on page seven. Pages seven and nine present also village financial information, except this is on a more current-term basis, so it excludes the effects of capital assets and long-term debt. It's also presented somewhat differently in that you see individual columns for the village's major funds, and then all non-major governmental funds presented in a column together. The focus of this statement is fund balance, and towards the bottom there, you can see fund balances are also further broken out into various categories, non-spendable, just items that can't be spent, restricted, which can only be spent on specific items, typically they're restricted by tax levies or donors, things like that. And then unrestricted, assigned, basically means that management has assigned that for a specific purpose. In this case, there's one assignment for debt service. And unassigned is similarly to unrestricted on the front, what can be spent for future purposes of the village. And going across, the general fund reports an unassigned fund balance of $2.8 million, so that's basically what's available for the next budget year. On page nine, this is the income statement essentially on the current-term focus. Again, it's presented by major funds and all non-major together in one column. The focus of this statement is change in fund balance, and towards the bottom of the statement, you can see that the village had, in the general fund, a positive change in fund balance of $376,000, and then kind of going across, capital experienced a decline of $298,000 mainly due to the large transfer out. Debt service was $500 to the positive, and non-major together cumulatively was a subtraction of 4 million, or not 4 million, excuse me, $4,293. These are the governmental funds. Details of enterprise fund, which is the water fund, police pension, and other non-major funds is presented in following statements and schedules, and then also there's budgetary information, which begins on page 48. The other item that I would like to just point out to the board is in the required supplementary information on page 50. There, I'll just pull out the snippets. It's basically, the village has two retirement plans, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, which is for basically all non-police sworn employees, and the Police Pension Fund, which is all for sworn officers. As of the end of the fiscal year, the IMRF fund, to call it the funded amount, was about 69 percent funded, and the Police Pension Fund was 63.07 percent funded. I would just like to bring attention to this because the village is told annually by two different sources on how much they should fund. IMRF tells the village how much they need to fund, which on page 53, you can see that the village funded 100 percent of what IMRF required, $322,000, and then on 54, the village's actuary determined that the contribution amount that should be paid was $389,000, and the village funded about 80, a little over 85 percent of that. That's, the key item here to note is for the Police Pension Fund, the village has until the year 2040 to be 90 percent funded in this, so just something to keep in mind with future budgeting. Also, one item that's actually in the auditor's communication, the end of that report shows some benchmarking ratios and kind of shows how the village stacks up among other governments of its same population size. Those are the remarks that I have prepared on the CAFER. Does anybody have any questions on either document that I could answer?
Any questions for her this evening? Thank you, Carrie. All right. At this time, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the MEDC funding request. And again, I'll ask Jeff for a brief summary before the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. This evening, we have Shar Colom Fiori, who's the Executive Director of Economic Development Corporation, and Dr. Neil Schlup, who is President of the Board. I'm here to present to you tonight. Shar is going to give you some background, some history of the MEDC and the purpose they serve, and then Dr. Schlup is going to talk to you about their request for additional funding. They have brought with them tonight some boards, which we have over there, which give you a list of the members. It's from the 10-year celebration, just to let you know the, you know, which companies and businesses are involved in the MEDC. And with that, I will turn it over to the two of them.
President Brawley and all the trustees, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, to talk to you. I know we were in front of this board here a while back. We are back again. We thought since it's been an election, new faces, we would present to you sort of a condensed version of what was presented here a few months back, and also make the request and go through some of those slide presentations to explain to you what our needs are and where we are financially at this time. So with that being said, I'm going to have my director here, Charlene, talk to you first of all a little bit about the EDC and go through a few slides, and then I'll come in in a few minutes to talk about our request.
So I think the next slide, first slide, talks a little bit about our purpose, and that is for the, for the audience as well as the new trustees, and it talks a little bit about what our purpose is, what our goal is, and what we do to help the economic impact of the village. And we work, you know, a lot with marketing and promoting the community. We also work with Montgomery residents, businesses, employees, and employers. We talk about effective economic development because it's, it takes a whole community to build a community with its strengths and assets. And that being said, what we do is we work with other agencies to help do things together as a group, and we work with the colleges to bring in job fairs for our residents. We work with nonprofit groups. We work with independent economic development corporations. Just recently, I attended the airshow with the Economic Development Kendall County Group, and I am very excited as we move forward and we talk about some of our accomplishments. One of the most effective things in economic development is to be known, and not only to be known, but to be recognized. And over four years ago, when I first started in this community and attended the airshow, people would say, "Montgomery, where is Montgomery?" And when I went last week, I am so proud to tell all of you and because of you and because of the hard work of this community, everybody knows where Montgomery is, everybody knows that we're a pro-business community, and most of the people also know what properties we have available. So that being said, I'd like to just talk a little bit about some history, and we were founded in 2003. Our goal, again, is to attract and retain businesses in the community. We've done a lot of great things in the last 10 years. I like to kind of focus on the last four years because that's how long I've been here, and I started my fifth year the beginning of September. We benefit the community through increased employment and opportunities within the community. It also generates new tax dollars. As an example, at the end of December, we had a building that was sold. I worked with Stag Industrial. The building sold for $19.8 million. That's quite a big chunk of change for the village. Now, we don't have a transfer tax at this time, but I know that in the past or in the future, let's say, there might be an opportunity, if we become whole rule, that any time there's a transfer of title, that the village would have the opportunity to receive funds for purchases and sales of land. But it also brings new money into the community, so that, I think, is very important. I probably spent about three months with that client. So again, I don't know how you measure, you know, the value of that, of those dollars, but I think it's important to use some examples. I think we can move on in the building relationships. I know that most people know I've been on a series of boards, worked with different workshop groups. I tried, I tried here just to highlight some different investments. Baseline is mentioned up there, that's the IDI building that was sold, and there's also some additional acreage. We also worked with TCB on the new investors who came in and purchased that property. They're in the process of looking for developers to hopefully develop that particular parcel. That will take some time, but what's exciting is that we do have vacant land to work with, and we have a lot of interested people that will come into this community. Butterball is a huge accomplishment. That was a cooperative effort. I had a lot of people join us in that particular project. Communication, I think, has just increased tremendously. As you know, a few years back, we've gone through several different administrations, and now more than ever, I think that we work extremely close with village staff, and it doesn't, it's exciting to me to have somebody give me a call and say, "Can you give us a hand?" That's what happened when we tried to get ahold of, well, we got ahold of Blockbuster. We talked to a series of different businesses that were on the verge of possibly leaving the community. I mentioned a few of them up there, including Ridge, who at one time was going to leave the community. They have 68 employees, and they're all paid quite a nice salary, so that was one that I thought was important that we, we keep in town. I think some of the excitement that occurred on, on the retail side, Douglas Road was definitely a priority. I know right now, I've received some phone calls, it's, it's moving a little slow, but as Mike sent me a memo and said, "Just think of all those cars that are going by, and soon we'll be able to address that, that as well." So what's exciting is that all of the corners are filled and that old mobile station's not sitting there anymore. Business-friendly is mentioned a lot. Again, I mentioned the airshow, which was an industrial show that I thought was really important, that everybody knew who we were, and actually, I was, I'm proud to say that Darwin Realty is, we're hoping to set up some appointments and have them come look at some buildings on Ocot and see if he can bring us some tenants. I just want to touch just here on marketing, because marketing is pretty tough when you don't have any cash. I did put... one that I thought was important that we, we keep in town. I think some of the excitement that occurred on, on the retail side, Douglas Road was definitely a priority. I know right now, I've received some phone calls, it's, it's a move in a little slow, but as Mike sent me a memo and said, "Just think of all those cars that are going by, and soon we'll be able to address that, that as well." So, what's exciting is that all of the corners are filled, and that old mobile station's not sitting there anymore. Business friendly is mentioned a lot. Again, I mentioned the airshow, which was an industrial show that I thought was really important, that everybody knew who we were. And actually, I was, I'm proud to say that Darwin Realty is, we're hoping to set up some appointments and have them come look at some buildings on Ocot and see if he can bring us some tenants. I just want to touch just a here on marketing, because marketing is pretty tough when you don't have any cash. I did put before you two articles that ran this year. I was able to negotiate a thirty-eight-hundred-dollar ad in a relocation magazine for six hundred dollars. And also, at the airshow, we were able to pass out those magnets, so you could thank me, you Packer fans, for that Chicago beer schedule. Next, I would just like to then bring Dr. Neil Schlup up here, who's been a partner and the chairman of our board, and has been very helpful. He's going to kind of go through some of the issues that we face with finances. Did I miss something? No? All right. Okay, thank you. With that, Dr. Neil Schlup. Let me grab my water here. Sorry.
I'll just preface this a little bit. I was very fortunate to be asked, before this even started, prior to ten years ago, to be on the initial committee that formed this organization, and it was a great honor for me to do that. And in those ten years I have been on the board, I was initially on the board as a member of the Chamber of Commerce as their representative, and then for the last five years, had been an in-kind member, as well as also being informed as the chairman. So, I can, think I can speak very well to the fact that there's numbers and where we can, where we've been, where we are going, and how we need to stay in this organization, because without additional funding, this organization is going to run through some very difficult and challenging times. And I think, that being said, the first slide I want to talk to you about is just a little bit about ten years of funding. It's pretty much speaks to the village at forty-five percent, the business at fifty-five. This number does include in-kind, it also includes fundraising, but it speaks to the fact that we have been generating as much as we can through our efforts, through private contributions, as well as those other efforts. We have people that have been with us from ten years, from day one, who have been five thousand dollars a year, from EEI to Caterpillar, to Rush Copley, have been big contributors for those ten years, and they are to be recognized for their financial efforts. For two thousand and thirteen, and we broke it down a little bit, so you can see what the numbers are, the village at forty-five, that the business at forty-seven. Other taxing bodies include things, schools, and library, county, and fire, for those of districts, and then the five percent was through our fundraising efforts, which consisted of our golf outing and our iPad, so we were able to raise some monies through there. Next slide, pretty much, I feel, speaks to what we really have seen. When I first was with the company, this organization, we were a hundred thousand dollars. We had thirteen members who were paying five thousand dollars apiece, and we were able to fund this, fund this very adequately. The funding went down, as you can see through the course of time, from seven, eight, nine, ten, and we've been at fifty-five thousand. Approximately in two thousand and ten, we had a thirty-thousand-dollar reserve, which has since been exhausted, so we no longer have that money available to us. So, we've been kind of watching that trending down, and we decided to put a slide here. Kind of shows what MEDC membership has been like. Again, I emphasize, in two thousand and eight, we were at thirteen members at five thousand. You can see the numbers started to come down as far as our membership. We have seen a slight increase in our members. We lose some, we gain new members. This last year, we had a net gain of two, seven left, and nine members did join the organization. Currently, we are only at three members at five thousand versus thirteen in two thousand and eight, and we have one in-kind member, myself. So, those are the current situation as far as numbers. When you look at the private contribution, again, you can see the dental decline. We have people that have left the organization. Of the initial thirteen, we do have six that are still members and see value in this organization, but are giving us at a less dollar amount. So, that reflects sort of, as you can see, the dollars that has been diminishing through the course of time, and therefore, the loss of revenue. What have we done? We have tried as hard as we can to make ourselves make this whole thing happen. Voluntarily, our biggest thing was our ED director took a twenty-five percent reduction in pay three years ago to help us get through some of our rough, our times, we had a lack of income. She also gave up some other benefits as far as costs for gas mileage, other things that were being paid to the previous EDs. We have no support staff. Charlene started, within two weeks after she was here, our support staff disappeared, so she has been pretty much the support staff from day one. She does the computer, does the email blast, takes care of all the monthly packets, quarterly reports, annual reports, it's all done by her. We initially moved the EDC over from Ocot to the location it's currently at on Webster Street, and at the time, I reduced the rent to an annual contribution of five thousand dollars, taking it at fifteen fifty a month. Through the course of time, our costs went up, the biggest cost being our property taxes. They doubled in five years. Some of that is because the village hall was next to us, and our property values did go up. That was passed on. The rent we had set up initially was a three percent increase, which was not passed along for five years, but I was forced to pass along the increases because of maintenance and taxes. To keep us there, we have decided, and I've worked with them, and I have lowered the rent again. I've taken another five thousand annual reduction to thirteen fifty, and that's currently a month-to-month rent that we are, having now been paid for that location. The act was done with the intent that we were asked to and encouraged to keep us at that location and not move over into the village hall. So, and on top of that, we also have cut in a lot of other areas in terms of our budget process, and that is where we are now. We cannot cut anymore. The demand's being placed on us to market, and to market this village require expenditures which we do not have. So, our slide we have in front of you is a breakdown. It is broken down into the different areas with a total increase request from us for thirty-eight thousand dollars. Initially, it was twenty, but we are now getting us through our calendar year for us, because it runs on a different schedule than yours. Will take us through until next May first of two thousand and fourteen, with the, with the purpose of not having to come back to this board and ask for any additional funding. It's broken down into the different areas from business retention, special events. In the past, our budget was less than five hundred dollars. We now show an increase of two thousand dollars. Business attraction activities, the big one, and this is for marketing, ICSC, air, bus tours, et cetera. We, again, had very little funding in this area. We have already spent some. It was asked of us by the village to attend the recent ICSC convention in May of Las Vegas. We had no funding for that. We did spend twenty-five hundred dollars of our money to get there, to be at that convention in May. Marketing publicity, we got that, again, at twenty-five hundred. It involves us going through, again, different elements to allow us to market and make this community better visualized. Property, equipment, and rent. That is including us getting through next year, based on the current rent at thirteen fifty, staying where we currently are at, as well as utilities. I will preface this by saying, we have worked very hard to market the place. One of the issues that we did lose was we had a renter, the Chamber of Commerce, was paying us approximately six thousand dollars a year to rent the location next door, and we were giving them, back to them, an in-kind membership on our board. When they moved out, we lost that source of revenue stream, and at this point, we are both in-kind memberships, so there has been nothing other than just the in-kind sharing back and forth in the chamber. We had a short-term tenant there that lasted a while, but we have run up against some unfortunate issues where the real estate person who had that location for us has said that there is an issue of bringing people in as a sublease because of conflicting times where they might want to have some privacy issues. We also were approaching it from the standpoint of them coming in, renting the whole lease, and letting us sublease back to them. And again, that ran into a lot of resistance from them, issues that may come in as a new renter. So, we tried, and we worked through that. It currently is off the market. It's, again, an avenue that we can pursue, but then, again, that's where that went for the last year, trying to get a tenant to go into that place after the chamber left the location. One of the issues that we originally talked about, too, is we have made a request. We are operating with equipment that was purchased back in oh-six, oh-seven, computers, server, and software. Our server was shut down a year ago. We paid an outside service to come in to help get our computers at least working the best we could. They have crashed twice in the last two months, and a lot of effort was spent by Charlene to get the computers up and going, and therefore, lost man-hours were spent on the computer that unfortunately couldn't be utilized in other areas. So, we're looking for a three thousand dollar addition to at least get one new computer, as well as new support, IT support, and some new software. Personnel and benefits. We have had a major discussion with the entire organization, and this was an area that we talked about, and the board did approve what we were, what you are seeing presented to you this evening. With that reduction of salary that our ED director took, we are trying to get some of those revenues back to her. So, this is a fifteen thousand dollar request. Eight thousand dollars of that is to get back to Ms. Fiori as a loss of revenue that she took. When we initially hired her, she was hired at eighty-four thousand dollars. She took a twenty thousand dollar cut in pay three years ago to sixty-four thousand. She pays her own health benefits, she pays her own retirement, that is all from her salary. We have been able to bring her up to a salary currently at seventy-two thousand, eight thousand, we put her to eight thousand still, four thousand dollars short of her current initial salary, but at least getting her back to an eighty thousand dollar annual salary. She is also telling me, and we're working with her, she has requirements to maintain certification every three years. I, myself, have to do the same thing to maintain my license to practice in the state of Illinois. We are trying to provide her some monies to help her to get to these classes, to attain her certification again, so we keep her as a, quote, "certified economic developer." And those classes in time do cost money, so that's what the two thousand dollars is allocated for her there. The last number you see is five thousand dollars. We have had no administrative assistance at all to help her. Our goal is to try to find some part-time help at about a five to six days per month for four to five hours a day. It's not a lot, but at least helps her to get some additional things done, and that's what the five thousand dollar request is for there. In closing, again, we go back to the last ten years. We have done a lot for this community. We, we know this organization has viability, we know it has to sustain itself, and we know that we cannot let this organization go by the wayside. In terms of numbers, for every dollar spent for the last ten years, we have returned about a dollar twenty in terms of our private contribution, so we felt that the money that the village has given us has been well-spent, and we've done everything in our power to continue to provide for the private sector funds to be there as well. So, with that, I would say I was, I will leave it at that and open up for any questions or discussion you may have.
Thank you, Doc. Appreciate it. At this point, kind of looking for some direction from the board, so if anybody has any comments.
I have a few comments. I think it was last year or the year before that Oswego eliminated their Economic Development Corporation, and I think since then, they've now reinstituted it, and they realize that it was a mistake. You're correct, we are a different village board now. I know the previous village board was thinking about eliminating the MEDC altogether, and I, I think that would have been a mistake. I'll just remind my fellow board members that the village just received a grant to do a comprehensive plan, and we received, I think our comprehensive plan's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, or somewhere in that ballpark. And most of us attended this visiting, this visioning share that was held last week, and we all came up with ideas of what we wanted and how we wanted Montgomery to grow, and we, we've already lost an economic development director. We don't have an economic development department.
Community development.
Or, sorry, thank you, community development department. But, we've got a, they're, they're our partner. The MEDC, their whole goal is to help Montgomery grow and be a better place and bring in business. And I think that if we don't support that, I think we're shooting ourselves in our, in the foot, and why, why even apply for the grants for the comp plans? I mean, it makes no sense.
So, does that mean you support the request?
I absolutely support the request.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the board?
I just, I see a pretty big value in marketing. It sounds like that's exactly what the MEDC does, is they're, they are our voice, they are our presence, where we can't send staff out to attend some of these conferences and be a champion for our cause. And my background is marketing, so I put a great value in the work that you're doing. So, I'm absolutely in support of giving them the tools that they need to be able to do it effectively.
Can I clarify what's being requested? How, how much money are we talking about, over what period of time?
The request is thirty-eight thousand dollars additional for the fiscal year that we're in, and then I believe the MDC board would like that to be an annual, then that we would increase our contribution by that.
So, what number should we add thirty-eight thousand to?
We currently had budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars for this year, so it would bring you to a total of ninety-three.
I think an observation I would have is that the communication has improved dramatically between the MEDC and the, and the sitting board. And I think part of the problem that Trustee Youngerman was identifying was driven largely by an absence of effective communication, and a belief that somehow our two representatives on the MEDC were keeping us informed about your successes and your objectives and your goals. I'm seeing a significant improvement, so I think it's appropriate to recognize that. The village's community development department never was charged with economic growth or economic expansion or industrial development or any of that. We still do have a community development department, and I'm pleased with their efforts as well. The terms are a little confusing, but what we're looking to the MEDC to do is stabilize and grow our economic base, bring more jobs to the community, bring the type of jobs to the community that people can afford to raise families and, and buy homes with. And I think we're seeing important steps in the right direction there, so. I'm inclined to support this as well.
Thank you.
I was president of the first year that we had an MEDC. I agree with everybody that this is a good proposition. We've, I know what Shar has done. I know that other towns have hired people for six figures, and there, there were ex-community directors, not MED, or not economic certified directors. I think a lot of the names she put up there have, she's had very good communication with. I think in the past, and I think you can ask Shar that, she had paperwork all the time to all the members. I think the board has changed. I don't think it's the information. I think the board here is a little more directed toward economic development, where some of the past maybe didn't, wasn't that responsive. But I think within, like she said, Butterball, Gusto's always been a big backer of ours, putting in twenty-four million dollars addition. A lot of that was with her help, and Dan Caballero was on our board for many years and has always given us the five thousand dollars. A lot of the other members may have dropped down, like Fox River Foods, change of management. Maybe the amount is, is less, but then they'll turn around and give us money at the golf outings. And your golf outing may be a fundraiser, but it's also an opportunity of all the businesses to get together, and Shar gets to talk to all of them, all the businesses talk to each other, and they're the ones that bring more business also to our village. So, in my case, I think definitely, as the figures show, MEDC could use more money, and it would surely help the village in the long run.
Justy Hines, do you have any comments?
I have no comment about it right now.
Okay.
I will, I will add a few comments here. It has been on the MEDC board for probably a year and a half, and in that time, getting to see our, our big hitter local businesses come to the MEDC board meetings and the business climate meetings and support what we do here in Montgomery, and we're getting all of this bank, and our business community is basically subsidizing the department for us. So, for what amounts to ninety-three thousand, I think it's well worth it for us, and nobody benefits more from having an economic development department. Somebody's sole focus- Somebody's sole focus is to promote Montgomery and bring jobs and development to our town. Nobody benefits more than the village of Montgomery and our residents. So I absolutely support this, I appreciate Dr. Schlepp coming here today and Shar and putting together a presentation for this board, and I would encourage you to keep up the good communication with this board as we move forward, so.
I could just add one more. This is rest more sort of trustee bond. Thank you for your comments, and I appreciate your ability to come forward and let us know that we are improving. We will make an effort to continue that relationship. That meant a lot to me personally, too. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, we'll add this to. We'll place this on the agenda for Monday for approval. Would you like it on the separate action or on consent?
I have no problem with consent. We have the majority, so.
That is fine with me. Justine Heinz, do you have any objection to that?
No, I'm not so sure that we can't go back to the way we had it when we had Amy here. She bought a lot of business in it, and she worked for the village, and that's where I'm going. I think if we want economic development, we should have hired a person here in the village to work with the village.
So we'll put that on items for separate action then.
Okay.
Very much. Thank you, Doc. I appreciate it. All right, we'll move on this evening. Liquor license request for the old Blockbuster building, and I'll turn it over to the chief of police, Dan Myers.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight, in your packet was a proposal from Manny Ravidia. Manny, will you please come down? Tonight Manny has proposed a liquor store at the area fifteen-fifty Douglas Road. Manny owns that Montgomery Plaza. Tonight he's going to talk about what his proposal is. I'd like to introduce Manny at this time.
The items were actually at the dais for you this evening, they weren't in your packet, but you had two items waiting for you this evening.
Hi, Manny Ravidia. I hate to put this in the liquor store category, this is more like a wine and spirit kind of store. It's a little above the liquor store definition. It's Ermanetti. I opened one of those in one of my shopping centers in Roselle, Illinois, and you probably have pictures of those, the store with you. Basically, what we cater is medium to high-end wine and liquor and all kind of beer and malts. And today I'm requesting the village to approve, the board member, to approve an additional liquor license for this spot, the former Blockbuster.
I believe as we've explained to you, when one of these requests comes forward, we look to you to either let us know you're in favor of it and you'd like us to move forward with the background check and other things, you are not in favor of it this time, or if there's more information you would like from us or from the prospective request or to bring back to you, so. And obviously, he would answer any questions you may have.
It's package goods only that we're referring to. Carry on.
No, yes, package good to go.
You know, we got Randall Liquors, we got Kmart, we got Montgomery Market, we got the Old White Hen and their little store. We got enough liquor stores in the village of Montgomery. We don't need anymore, especially that area. You're going to run the other old business out. I'm not for it.
Okay. Thank you.
I came across this situation in Palatine and opened a place called The Wine Cellar. You're welcome to look it up, and I was opposed by the board members in the beginning, and later on I came back and tried again, and I was approved. And it sits on a beautiful spot today, bringing in three million dollars in sales, and it does very well. There's no kids, no underage. I never been served by police with underage tickets, so I usually don't bring, you know, the raffs or whatever case. It's a high-end wine and spirit shop.
And it will operate under Ermanetti?
Ermanetti, yeah.
Will operate under that name?
Yeah, that's the one that involves out now. Ermanetti has about sixteen stores in the Chicago area.
Mr. Ravidia.
Yes, sir.
Earlier this year, this board approved a liquor license for a bar and restaurant in the same center, and you were the applicant in that case.
Yeah, that was my brother, the applicant, but it's the same ownership of the center.
Can you give us kind of an update of that process? I think there's a little, I could be some concern that that one came, was approved, and here we are months later and we haven't seen any progress on that one.
You know, I have already done the drawings and the plans for it, and I think you have a copy of it. The process is awaiting the gaming board to approve our gaming license, and that's why it's the delay. We just don't want to open the place until we get our gaming license approved, which is in the process.
So you, is it safe to say that you will not open this restaurant if you don't get a gaming license?
I will open that restaurant, regardless.
Have you submitted the plans to the village for?
No, not yet.
I think we're making a big mistake here. I talked to the owner, Randall Liquors, and his business has declined since we put that one on Douglas, the Old White Hen, and we can't run those people that have been in here for, in business here for all them years, to have them go away just to get another liquor store in. We don't need any more liquor stores on each side.
I guess my concern is somewhat, I don't know if we need a high-end liquor in Montgomery. Competition is competition. If, I think Randall Liquor's been there long enough where they can, they can hold the competition, although we've already churned out another liquor store at Montgomery Road in Douglas, mainly because we already had a lot of them in that area. I am not real happy that you came for a license, or your brother did, and then turned around and haven't done anything with it, and all you're waiting for is the slot machines. In that case, it's, you're not really selling a restaurant, you're after the money from the machines, and yet you haven't done anything. And in this case, liquor is something that maybe the economy hasn't affected a whole lot, but I just don't think it's the type of business. I like Blockbuster, Papa G's was in there, those two were working very well together. And if this is why the rent wasn't lowered, is to put this in, I sure, I sure wouldn't recommend it, so.
I'm not sure that the rent was lowered or has any effect on that. I was negotiating that lease, and I was on top of it all the time. I offered that space by thirty percent less. Blockbuster had made the decision to move out because they just ran out of idea to market the movie business, and it's all through DirecTV and stuff, but I don't think, I negotiate, I own and operate three hundred tenants, and I deal with them on a daily basis. I don't think the rent was an issue with Blockbuster. It may seem that way because one of the managers there just kept throwing around, if Manny would reduce the rent, they would stay. She has no business in any making decisions on the, it's a corporate, and I was talking to corporate all the time, and there was nothing that I could have done to save Blockbuster there.
I can agree with you on that, that it's going to more other avenues for that type of media, but at the same time, it was a quick decision, I think, for you to put the liquor store in, and maybe that in Roselle, Addison, that would work out, but in Montgomery where we've tried to keep, I think we got enough places like Walgreens and everybody else to buy liquor, and I'm just not for sure that our residents need more liquor stores.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm inclined to agree with trustee Heinz on this. I think that we were pretty heavy with liquor stores on that side of town, and I don't think that there's room for another one at this time. But I did support when you came through for the restaurant, and I would encourage you to move forward on that.
I will.
This year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Man, do you want to take consensus on that?
I didn't.
I concur with.
I didn't hear anything.
Nobody kind of opposed it, so.
Okay, we'll move forward this evening, back to economics. We'll talk about economic development discussion, and I will turn it over to our acting clerk and assistant manager, Jamie.
Thank you. Well, tonight I was hoping to help facilitate a discussion about economic development. I just want to thank Dr. Schlepp and Shar for coming in and talking, and one of the things they pointed out was that, or there was some pointing out that the MEDC has done a good job of communicating with us, and from the staff's perspective, we feel like in return, we can work on our communication to them and try to make it more of a two-way conversation, so that if there are things and desires of this board, that we have those discussions, and we in turn have our representatives to the MEDC relay that information to the MEDC board, so that they know these things. So the first kind of item, if we just go back to the presentation that was given last month, was the question about if the board is interested in establishing some basic parameters around sales tax incentives. So at this point, I'm just really kind of looking to see if this is something you'd be interesting, interested in directing staff to do, or to bring back some recommendations on what we might talk about.
I've always been a proponent of a sales tax increase. We only have so many places we can get extra money. Sales tax is one of them. I don't think people for pennies will turn around, and we have no car dealerships right now, I don't think for pennies they're going to shop at a different place. We're only at seven percent on the King County side, that's the cheapest sales tax. Nobody's even close to us on that around this whole area. I don't see, the other point always given is that everybody helps us with the revenue, including the people from Oswego, Aurora, we have a big contingent of Aurora on the southeast side that shops in Montgomery, at Kmart and that area, and these people are all helping us with our revenue stream. And another pennies here or there are not going to make a big difference, I don't think, in where they shop. It will improve our roads, we can put more money in our CIP, we've talked about that, and I think this is, looking at all the other revenue streams, I can't see any other revenue stream that we can do without putting a referendum on sales tax on it.
Is that addressing the point of the question? I misunderstood something.
I think that's a good, a good point, but no, correct. I mean, the question here is really, there have been several scenarios where the village has given sales tax rebates back to businesses. The most recent example of that will be the Sam's Club, where over ten years, the village is going to rebate a significant sum of that sales tax. So the idea here is if the board wants to explore looking at under which scenarios they would be open to doing that, so that when Shar and, you know, myself and our department markets the property, we have a better idea of, you know, what we can say and say, we know our board would kind of support this, or our board would not support this, and use that to help kind of set some very basic parameters on sort of our marketing and incentivizing those types of businesses to come in.
While we want to maintain flexibility, I think some things we're looking for is, do you want to consider it for existing businesses if they renovate or expand in some way? And if so, you know, what kind guidelines you want to set? Is it only on increased, you know, sales tax over a baseline amount, or do you not want to consider for them at all? For new businesses, do you want to set some threshold on anticipated sales tax that's going to be generated? So Sam's Club comes in, and a guy with a hot dog cart comes in, you know, are you going to consider it for both of those, or do you want to set some baseline there? So that's, I guess, what we want to know, more so that I think, like I said, we want to give that flexibility, but if there's one that comes in that we know you're not going to consider, we can let them know that upfront, that, you know, we don't feel the board would take that from the direction we've been given.
Two comments I would make. My personal goal as a trustee is to see the industrial park fill up and our empty industrial buildings fill up with good-paying jobs. So while retail is an important part of our balance, and it's been a very helpful part of our growth, it isn't, it isn't the prime directive in my view. And I would rather, I think, address retail opportunities where the sales tax comes into play on a case-by-case basis. I'm a little concerned unless we get guidance to the contrary, that whatever we put in writing might very well become our sticker price and the point from which we negotiate, and I think that might be counterproductive. I think I'd rather look at the situation for what it is and what our competition is. We've had some scenarios where some very fine retailers have chosen to settle here as opposed to our neighbors, and our sales tax situation might be one of the factors they looked at. If we're the lowest among our Fox Valley neighbors, then those companies that open their doors here have an immediate competitive advantage, because the consumer walks out of their door with more in that shopping bag than they would in towns with a higher sales tax. So our family drives across town to hand in a coupon, I stand in the checkout lines behind people handing in coupons. Families are smart, they know that that all adds up, and I think we have to be mindful of that, too.
I'm sorry, I didn't have this in front of me, I'm sorry, I jumped at the sales tax.
Oh, no.
I know it's farther down. And answer to him, on a ten-dollar item for a nickel, I'm not going to drive across town, but, and I don't think a lot of people will, getting back to this, which I should have been talking about, but I didn't have it up there. We've always had minimum requirements, and I think we've taken each case at a time, and a lot of it depends on the developer, like Inland, and I think we should still have some kind of minimum requirements. Over a certain level, we still get some, they get some until it's paid.
To the point that you're both making, once you put it in writing that this is something we'd be willing to do, you've just committed that you're doing it. I think it needs to be something that, it is truly something that we keep in the well. If we really are interested, we, i.e. a Sam's Club, then you can reach into the bag of tricks and pull it out, but to have that ready at hand to hand out, you may as well put it right on the letterhead, because everyone's going to take it then, they're going to want it.
And I under, I mean, I, that's, that is true. I think where this conversation comes from, and I can't speak for Charlene, but I know in my experience, I've had people call me and say, you know, can you, what kind of incentive can you get me? Can you get me a sales tax incentive for a used car dealership? Can you get me a sales tax incentive for this or for this? And my answer to them has been, I'm not, I don't know. You know, if you could give me some more specifics, I, we can go to our board and ask, or we can go, you know, but at some point, you know, that's okay if, as long as you're acceptable, you know, that answer's okay for you, and that you're okay with the time that it might take or the interest you might potentially lose because you don't have that offer, you know, some sort of a minimum out there that you could say, well, I know my board will consider this, or they have considered this in the past.
Well, if, say a used car lot does call in, and then it's that ten-second phone call, are you willing to give a tax incentive? If the answer is, well, I would have to check with my village board, okay, thank you, and the person's okay, thank you, then obviously their interest wasn't that great to start with.
Right.
They're bottom feeding. And frankly, with what we have, and trustee Bond made the point once, we have a finite amount of land available to be developed, we need to be selective about how we develop that land and who we allow to develop that land. We can't just take anything that comes along just to take it. So I think having it come through before the board and review it on an individual basis is prudent.
Okay. I feel like we've got a pretty clear picture on that one then from you.
Yep.
If you'd like to.
The second one. The second one and the third one kind of go together. I know we had talked about this one being up there because this was something that, you know, the Economic Development Corporation was interested in, and that, you know, some communities do look at waiving building permit fees as a way to stimulate or to help out, you know, businesses that potentially renovate buildings. And from the staff's perspective, we felt that a better way to do that would be to charge the fee and then do some sort of a rebate or a grant program to kind of incentivize what you do want to occur, but to kind of keep that, you, keep that, keep the building fees in place as is. So, one thing that would, just as a comment here, would be if this is something you're interested in being able to help out businesses that are bringing buildings up to code or making internal improvements, we would need to look at funding a grant program or facade improvement program, which is essentially the same thing as cutting the fees, it's just the opposite. And so we would potentially recommend that if this is something you're interested in, that it be discussed as part of the budget in terms of funding that for economic development. So, we can talk about it more now if you want, but it's really a, if you want to do a grant program, you know, we'll be requesting that during the budget time and we can work on that. And then the, the third one, this is, this is the two-way communication I was referencing before. The question is, if the board is interested in actually going through an exercise to discuss their priority areas, we can bring that back for a discussion. Charlene and I were working on an exercise where we looked at the various areas of the village, like trustee Bond said, you know, this industrial corridor, Ogden Hill, the downtown Orchard Crossings, you know, trying to figure out where your priorities lie in terms of what the first focus should be and the second focus should be and where the most effort should go. So, this question tonight is really, do you want to have that discussion and do you want to undergo an exercise to look at the various elements of economic development and where you might spend or where, where we can put our two cents towards the MEDC board in terms of what the village is interested in?
I think that's a, I think that's a good idea to have some direction at least for, you know, specific areas, specific types of business.
I agree.
Okay. So we are, we are, we're, or Charlene and I are going to work together and bring forward sort of a way for you to do that easily so that you can give some direction that can be used. And then the last item up there, establishing performance indicators and guidelines for the MEDC. I did put a memo in the packet with regards to an article. And this really, I think, is for the board but also the staff in looking at, as we fund the MEDC, you know, night, in this case, it'll be $93,000 annually, kind of, how should the staff and the village board check that? And what kind of responsibility do we want to hold for where our money's going? And so, there were some suggestions that I put in there noting that the asterix, if we do break down the areas that we prioritize and, just as an example, if we said that the industrial Ockit Road corridor of the Tiff District was going to be, you know, the top priority, then you could look at that area alone specifically for some of these to kind of see how, how we're doing from that standpoint. But so this was just some ideas that we could toss around and consider. If this is something the board is interested in doing, we would, we could ask for more specific, you know, values or work with them to kind of come up with some numbers that they could report back to us.
I'm going to jump in on this because I had a few comments on the other ones, too. I think the performance indicators, from what I read in here and from just some research, general research that I've done, I think that it, it sounds like a great idea and I think it's something that would be worth checking out. But I also think that the, it may be very difficult to establish a bar with which to measure ourselves against. I think every town and every community, I mean, especially Montgomery being long and slender with industrial and this and that, just the build of the community would make it tough to find somebody that's doing the same thing and kind of compare that to. But I think it would be good for, to track that kind of thing. I think that would be important, kind of as our own bar moving forward, how, how we're doing over the years. I did kind of want to go back to the sales tax. My, Jeff cut me off before I got to make the comment. There's, there's two times when I, I think that this would be definitely appropriate. When a business is coming into our community that has to put in significant public improvements that we will now own, either water main extension or roads that our residents can use, I see that being a very clear time when we could rebate some sales tax to them for putting in our roads. Another opportunity would be is if you want somebody, if you really need somebody, like the anchor of having a Sam's Club out there, that is a shoe-in, they're going to get a sales tax incentive, we're going to incentivize them to come to that development. And the hope is that, and there's no public improvements involved with that, the hope is that, that that whole center builds out and you end up with no vacant lots there. So I think those are two clear-cut cases. And, you know, Shar, correct me if, if I'm wrong, I mean, using that in that situation is completely, when somebody calls and says, this is what we're going to be doing, then I think that our answer is, yeah. I mean, we support those, those two areas. If, if, you know, a popsicle shop or something calls you up, I would like to see us have a threshold that, you know, as much as we want you in the community, if we rebate your sales tax, the amounts that you're going to get aren't going to cover, you know, what you're spending anyway. So I think to save staff time, it would be important for us to have a bottom threshold. And I, I don't think that it's a good idea for us to waive commercial fees. I know that we've done that sometimes in the past, but let's keep the fees standard where they are and again, look at things. I'm not one for case-by-case, but I think when you're trying to attract somebody to the community, I think it's important to look at the jobs they're creating in that. So, nobody commented so far on this facade improvement. I think that we could look at that for certain corridors. We should look at that with MEDC, whether it's the Douglas Road corridor or Montgomery Road, if we can find some way to, to fund that over time. I think that that would do wonders for the areas. And, that's my spiel.
I'll go back to what you got up there, Jamie. Some of those things, I mean, if, if we have Shar do that, she'd definitely have to have a full-time person almost to do some of the figuring. Some of the stuff, like the, the value of new construction, the number of jo, I would think you'd have a better handle on that than the MEDC would, just by building permits, rather than her having to report to you that, okay, we got this many dollars. It's more paperwork, to the point that I'd rather have her out talking to these people than saying, how many jobs did you create? And have to, every month, put down, a lot of this was monthly type stuff, just, or yearly stuff. It just, to me, it's too much paperwork for her to do. Some of the things she could, and she has reported some of the things. So I don't, I don't mind some of those things, but there's a, there's a few in there, like the percentage of, I mean, when you get down to the percentages, it's, it's just a lot of paperwork, especially with somebody with not, with no secretary.
Okay.
To that point, yeah, I was, I had the exact same thought, trustee Lee, is how much time is it going to take to gather? Data is great and it's useful, but at some point, there's a tipping point in the scale. How much time are you spending gathering data? And how effective is it in a decision-making process as opposed to having you spend your time on the phone trying to recruit the next big box store to come into town? Or, you know, there's a, there's a finite number of hours in the day. If this is information that's readily available and it's a couple clicks of the mouse and you throw it in a spreadsheet, great. But if this is going to take hours upon hours to gather this information, I'm not sure that there's a great value in it.
There is a software program that you can purchase that costs a couple thousand dollars that Oswego has that can address some of those numbers. That's funneled through the MSA and through the real estate. I can't remember what that acronym means, but where that data is funneled through. But, it's expensive, but it's there. Because I know that, it told me, BJ told me that he almost used his whole, oh, I'm sorry.
There is a marketing program that can talk about, you know, vacancies and rates and percentages, but it's only as good as the data that's out there and it's only as good as probably like six to 12 months prior. So, again, Oswego did tell me that they had utilized a program and he used most of his marketing funds for it. And it's about $3,000 annually. So, some of those things, you know, and we also did start a database that I provided to community development a few years back. And we've been trying to keep up with it. I'm just not sure where we're at with it. But, we do have a very strong base, so some of that can be worked on, maybe Jamie's staff. We'll see. But we'll work together on some of that, so, thank you.
It wasn't in the budget.
There is a slide in your presentation this evening that's titled "History and Background." And with the exception of founded in 2003, all of those other bullet points are wonderful metrics that you might want to factor into your thinking about how would you report back on the process and the successes? Attract and retain business in the community? I mean, if you look at these in a different context, as if they were metrics, they're actually, to my perspective, quite good. And I think there is a need for a balance between reporting and going out into the street where the business is. But, if we had a department head or a vendor that was getting up into the six-figure territory with us, the prudence for the Board of Trustees would be, how are we assessing the, the return on this investment? It isn't competitive. We haven't brought in other entities to, to present to us. Our confidence rests with you. And I think that confidence would be buffered by a process that we're comfortable with that's giving us the kind of feedback and touchpoints that we can look to residents and say, we're, this is terrific. We're, we're getting a real good return on our money here. So I...
I think my point was that she's always given us figures on how many people she's seen, how many businesses have been retained. And some of these questions are more like Gusto, she's, it's a $24 million project. He said how many jobs he was going to improve on. If we're getting restaurants by Sam's Club, they're going to tell you how many they're going to employ. I don't think she's got to write it down. We can read that in the papers. And I guess the whole thing is, is remembering that Gusto put $24 million in a building and stayed in Montgomery. I think that's the whole retention part of it. I don't need to know that, on paper, more paperwork.
Okay. I think we have a decent handle on this or at least a start on this at this point.
Yeah, if you have any other comments or you think of anything that you want to add, you know, feel free to share them with me or with Charlene or with Jeff and we can, you know, keep those because your comments have been very helpful. So, thank you.
Excellent. All right, we'll move on. Back to Jamie with the temporary community event signs. Go ahead.
Are you skipping?
Oh, I skipped Third Avenue. I apologize. I didn't even see that. And they've been patiently waiting, too. I didn't even see that there.
As have I.
We're going to go ahead with the Third Avenue follow-up discussion. I'll turn over to Director Public Works, Mike Povens.
Thank you, President Brawley. On the screen tonight is a, a few notes that I wanted to present tonight. As you recall, we're going to divide this, the question of Third Avenue.
Yeah, and I will just encourage the board members to, and the staff to remember to speak into their microphones because that will help.
Or you can go up there. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Walter.
All right, thank you. Tonight, I just wanted to present some numbers on the pavement resurfacing portion of the question. As you remember, last time we spoke, we discussed dividing the, the questions at hand on Third Avenue into three, basically pavement, short-term stormwater situation, and long-term. So tonight, we're going to talk about pavement only. Up on the screen tonight are some of the, as I said, I worked with engineer Wallers to put together some numbers to show you the status of the project cost right now. You'll see, the original budget line item for the construction portion of this job was $185,000. The awarded contract value was $139,902. Again, we saw some great advantage in the current bidding climate, so, the estimated current cost of the contract, as you can see, is $144,846. We did have some additional cost due, when we put in the new water main, when we went to tie it in on the east end of the project. The area we were going to tie in was in disrepair, so we changed out some fittings and things like that. So our estimate of the final cost of the contract is $144,846. So, working with Vine Construction, that's the contractor, we had an estimate for resurfacing. So again, this would be to eliminate the patch in part. We do need to do some patching. But then resurfacing the entire pavement to, to its current width, that cost would be $34,519. So, when you add all those together, together, the estimated final cost of the contract with resurfacing, $179,365. That's a little bit below the original budget, about $5,600 worth. There may be a few extra costs in there with some additional landscaping and restoration that we would have to do along the edge of pavement. This will increase the height, the, the height of the pavement will be up several inches. So those are the numbers for you. There are a few bullet points. As we said, the estimated cost includes some work that was done. The additional cost of the resurfacing, you can see the assumptions made there. I'm not going to read through all those, but basically the different pay items that are involved. So, as we're talking about this tonight, I think some things to think about are, you know, it's been brought up the time element in, in respect that no work has been done on Third Avenue in X number of years. And although no one likes to wait a long time to have the road resurfaced, we know the reality of our budget these days puts us on a 60-year, 65-year cycle for resurfacing. That's not to say it would take that much longer to do it. It's hard to say where that would fall in in future programs. But again, there are many areas in town that have been waiting a long time for a lot of improvements. Nobody's happy to hear that and I'm not happy to say that, but it's the reality of the funding that we have available. It was mentioned about the street width. 20 feet is a permissible street width. I'm assuming that First and Second Avenue, when they were rebuilt, were built to current standards at the time. They do have curb and gutter. It's not to say that, should Third Avenue be rebuilt someday, that it wouldn't be widened. But for now, we're recommending if we do resurface, to resurface to the 20-foot width. Again, that is a permissible width. That has a lot to do with the amount of traffic. And again, traffic volumes may have increased, may have decreased, but when you look at it in perspective to total amounts of traffic, 20 feet is an adequate width for this pavement. Again, we talked about the other issues, the storm, the water runoff, that's really, as far as funding goes, that's a separate item. None of these funds would be available or used to do any of that work. We'll have to look at that separately. So really what we're talking about is use of the current funds to do this work. So, those are the nuts and bolts of it. So I'd open it up for questions.
I have a question. The estimated cost for resurfacing, does that include the restoration, any turf seed, that type of restoration?
I think there will be some additional cost for restoration. We have some restoration money worked in that would be required by the patching. Again, if, you may remember that the water main is going in on the north side of the pavement, so we've had to cut through a portion of the entire length of the north side of the pavement. So we had some money in there already for restoration. I think we'll have a little bit more again because the edge of pavement will be higher, so we'll need to fill in that drop-off with dirt, soil, and seed.
Are there any contingencies in place in that estimated cost as far as for potential overages or any, any, any unforeseen problems or?
The estimated resurfacing cost? No, that's purely based on the contractor's estimate of cost based on the definable pay items. I think it's fairly accurate. I, I mean, when we talk about contingencies, we try to figure out what may happen that we don't know about. Resurfacing's generally pretty straightforward. We have a decent idea of the depth that we'll have to put the pavement in at, you know, to correct... have to put the pavement in at, you know, to correct crown and things like that. So...
Would we be able to complete all of this work this year, including the restoration?
I would say yes. When I hesitated there, it's not the pavement I'm worried about, it's the restoration.
The seed?
With seed. Sometimes, as you well know, if you get the right growing conditions in the fall, seed will take off. If you don't, we'll have to come back in the spring and dress it up. But we're, yeah, and obviously, we'll reach a point where nothing's going to grow. So...
Thank you.
The anticipation would be yes, that we would get it done this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're not going to put that storm sewer in this year?
Well, that'll be for another discussion, trustee. I hope to have more information for you at a near-future meeting, so one of the next two meetings.
But if you're going to repave that just before the winter comes?
Right.
Okay, then when they put the storm sewer in, is it going to break half of that blacktop off of there again?
Well, the...
Section of it.
The project we'd be doing this year, I don't think would impact the new pavement considerably. It may at the very east end of the project, by Mr. Sattler's driveway is kind of where all the water comes into the project. So, we may have to do a little bit of saw cutting there of new pavement. But some future storm sewer project, you know, if you went storm sewer on both sides, all the way down, yeah, that would probably impact the pavement. But I don't think we're going to be at a point to make a decision on whether we would move forward with that project or not in quite some time.
Well, we're not going to wait another 19 years or so to put that storm sewer in?
It's not my decision, sir. I'll present the project to you and what the options are, and staff will make recommendations as we do. But...
As I understand it, and based upon, I think, what you told us earlier, we're looking at doing this work and the restoration now. You're looking at coming to us in a future meeting soon, relatively soon, regarding the issues on the south side of Third Avenue, and then potentially budgeting for those issues for next year, correct?
The intent would be to hopefully have a short-term, low-expense solution that we could do this fall to try to better control the water as it comes into that, into Third Avenue.
And then...
And keep it in the ditches. So, there would be some additional costs this year. But then a large-scale project would be, you know, for future consideration.
Okay.
There's no chance to do that prior to the paving?
To consider a full-scale, large project?
Not a full-scale, but this short-term, temporary solution to do it before the paving so we wouldn't have to saw cut the new pavement?
It's hard to say with certainty without talking to our contractor. They've already waited. We've talked to them that this was going to be an issue for conversation. So, I know the paving subcontractor is ready to come in.
The asphalt plants are going to close.
At some point, they will, yeah. It's hard to set an exact date. And I don't know if we're in danger of that. But there's cost in waiting, as you know, for a contractor. And so, to ask them to wait too long, I think would incur additional, a request for additional charges.
Well, and I think it's important to highlight in this situation that had we not be installing a new water main on this street, and this request came to the board, the simple answer, and the polite answer would have been, "We don't have funding for roads projects, and this street is not on our current list." But we are kind of confronted with a somewhat unique situation where half the road is torn up right now with the project. So, using the remainder of those funds seems logical. That being said, once that, once we do the resurfacing of that road, the likelihood that we're going to come back next year and put in full curb and gutter on a roads, in our roads program is probably slim, in my opinion, for various reasons. That goes to the, kind of the greater example of this, that we don't have any funding other than MFT for our roads program. So, unless this board and past boards have been tasked with finding a way to solve that problem. It's a $2 million annual that we're supposed to put on our roads, and we're not doing that by a long shot. And I think, and it's going to be a priority of mine, that this board addressed that issue. The past board felt that it wasn't maybe the time or to go out for a sales tax referendum, whatever the method may be. We've seen the same memo three times. But it's very important for, that's what, I think that's our job here, sitting here, is to find a way to build the streets and the water main and everything that we're tasked with doing. So, I just kind of wanted to highlight the greater picture that we have a 60-year replacement cycle, or whatever it is on our roads, is unacceptable. That doesn't work. And for us to sit by and do nothing wouldn't be advantageous for the future of Montgomery. So, I would hope that the board sees the unique situation in this, and we can address the paving this year, and then add that to our roads program and address the funding issue on that in the next year.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What are we doing with that money from Comcast? How much, $100,000 a year? How much are we getting back from, out of that?
KenCom?
KenCom or...
KenCom, I'm sorry.
I was confused.
I'm sorry. I, the, I'll defer to the village administrator on the finance.
Certainly, currently, we haven't said what we're going to do with the savings. That'll just be part of the next budget process. We did, this board authorized three new police officers in the current budget. So, part of it will be going towards that. And like I said, the rest will be decision of this board when the next budget process rolls around.
I can't see why we couldn't use some of that money for that road up there, too. Because they waited 25 years. Would he got to wait another 25? I mean, if one of us lived on that street, I know we would be down there, too.
It's a problem that we have to look at, for sure, for our roads program. So...
Trustee Eines, as far as the funding goes, you know, based on the, what we would plan on doing, there's money within the current budget to resurface the road. So, should you choose to spend that money on resurfacing. So, in this case, and President Brawley, I think, said it very well, it's kind of a unique situation. We've got a combination of needs here. We had water main, and now we've, you know, there's some pavement issues, and we have funding available because of the advantages we were able to glean from the bidding climate, you know, in the current economy. So...
Well, I just, look, I don't want to see them people wait another five or 10 years or whatever. I mean, my point is, if any of us had a street like that, we would be down there all the time.
I agree with Matt, though, that this is a unique situation. We're already doing paving it, and now we'll do the rest. But the night after Walter spoke, a couple of us trustees got calls, "When are you going to do my street, then?" And this is a unique situation. We want to keep it that way. We already got the road tore up. We're, are we going to repave? So, we repaved more of it. And I think you got to go by, you know, the traffic count and which street needs it the worst.
Okay. Trustee Bond?
Just to clarify, will this effort also include some work that will improve the drainage situation?
Not directly. It will not include any storm sewer, no extensive ditch work. The elevation of the pavement will be slightly higher. So, in that regard, there's sort of a secondary benefit in that if you look at the elevation it takes to overtop Third Avenue, it'll go up by a few inches, which may seem significant or not. But no direct storm sewer work with this, with these numbers.
Is, forgive me, I'm not an engineer. Is there something we can do with that ditch as opposed to resurfacing the whole road? If the water is the primary problem, is the resurfacing of the road secondary to solving that?
I think there's two concerns. One being the condition of the pavement, which is separate from the water, and the other being the water, which is somewhat separate from the pavement, other than, again, the overtopping height of the pavement. So, I've been viewing this really as two separate questions. And does the absence of one help the other? I don't think so.
I think what I'm hearing is that it might be a while before we get to the storm sewer part. And I'm wondering if now is a moment to look at what we could do short of a storm sewer to begin to address the water issue. And if that means we can't afford the resurfacing, at least we've addressed the initial problem that was brought to us.
Engineer Wallers and I are working towards some of those answers. One of the challenges we're facing is timing of the existing open contract, and to decide whether we want the paving work to be done. It doesn't preclude us from saying, "No, we don't want to do it now. We can come back later." My guess would be the cost would be higher. It's not, et cetera, et cetera. So...
And I think, maybe to clarify a little bit, the concern up at the board is that we're not wasting our precious dollars. So, the $40-some thousand that we might, or $34 that we'll spend on resurfacing, so long as that money isn't cut into, or wasted, or torn up in a year, I think that might be irresponsible. But looking at resurfacing, and then in the near future, in the next month or two, or three, or less than six is what you said, we look at a short-term drainage problem that will be likely less than the $34,000. And then we'll have to find a way to, if we want to fund that. But storm sewer is a long way off on this project, admittedly. Correct?
I would say yes, that's accurate. And just to clarify on the schedule for the next term, a short-term view of the storm sewer, I'd anticipate that we'll have enough information to come before you again at one of the next two board meetings. Again, our goal is that if we choose, if we find that we can do something, and we do have funds to do it, we would like to do it this fall during this construction season. Again, there's a lot of ifs in there, and things to consider as far as costs and budgets and what can be done. But just to give everyone a little clearer idea of what the timeframe is.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Director Povens? The general consensus that I'm feeling is that we should move forward with the resurfacing. Is there, can we take, like, a straw pull on this, Denny?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Steve? Doug? Stan? Okay. So, move forward with that, and we'll look...
Our next step, then, we'll work with the contractor to start that. Then we will bring the, we'll have to bring an official change order before the board, likely for that 34, 519. We may hold off until the final value is known. It may change a little bit. But again, we'll proceed and get the contractor started towards that end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, what happened here? What did you guys end, but I can't hear after you? All you guys up there, I can hear you talking, and then...
Okay.
Did you say that you're going to pave the street now, or what?
Yes. Maybe Director Povens, could you bounce outside with him and just give him the summary?
Certainly. I'd be happy to meet with the group out in the lobby if I can share the details. But the short answer is yes. The street will be resurfaced with this project.
Immediately? I mean, not six months from now, immediately?
Is a continuation of the water main project.
Right.
So, that may be a week, or two, or three, or four. But there won't be...
And then you're going to try and upgrade what we have there so the water doesn't come across the street, but...
In the interest of keeping the board meeting moving, I'd be happy to step outside and answer as many questions as you'd like.
I'm sorry, but I just couldn't hear after you guys talking.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Dale, is there any way you can turn the volume up in the audience? Is that a possibility?
My feedback.
Okay.
Then just turn mine up, and you can leave Steve's down.
All in favor?
Aye.
We actually will be working on the microphones and adjusting them. So, we actually probably will do that.
I'm going home.
All right. So, again, we'll move on to the TIF redevelopment planning program, correct?
Yes. This item is just a very quick update for you, that we are moving forward, establishing the TIF district along the Ockit Road corridors. At the September 23 board meeting, you will see an ordinance that sets the time and the place of the public hearing, which by law, we're required to do in advance. At this point, staff is reviewing a draft of the redevelopment plan. And it does include the Hammond property, as well as kind of the draft boundaries that were established. And what staff is planning on doing this week and next week is sitting down and taking the input that was given by the board and the fire districts, as well as kind of the discussions that have been going and looking at the individual properties to kind of look at, almost making a recommendation to define the boundary more clearly. So, the report itself, you will see, does have just kind of the blanket boundaries still in it, because for the purposes of that report, that you can always remove and change the boundaries, but you can't add the property back in. So, that's sort of where staff is at, to make that recommendation. And then, the joint review board process will start after that. And we are planning on establishing the TIF district sometime around the end of this year. So, that's just kind of your short timeline for what to expect. And we can answer any questions that you have on that.
Okay. So, is it safe to say that, kind of to reiterate, the boundaries aren't set in stone. We need this formality to move forward. And that's about it.
Correct.
Okay.
They can continue to change. We'll look at making some specific recommendations. But then they could even change through the joint review process if they decided. So, it will continue to evolve.
Okay. Will you have more to add on this topic at the board meeting? Or would you like us to put it on consent if there's no objection?
That would be great.
Is there any objection to putting the plan, the timetable, on the consent for the next meeting? Or you guys want to have a chat on that? No objection?
Really, it's just setting the date for the public hearing.
No, it's fine.
Okay. All right, we'll put that on consent. And now, we get to move on to temporary community event signs.
Sure. This item was actually an item that Trustee Bond had brought up, and it basically would create an ordinance that looks at some temporary community event signage that was, there is a sample ordinance that he had pulled out that was included in your packet. At this point, what we're looking for is just a discussion from the board on, "Do you want to do this?" And if so, we would go back and make a recommendation on the actual ordinance. So, at this point, it's just, we just want direction to do it or not do it. And then if there's anything specific, you would want us to make sure we included in our recommendation, we would do so.
Okay. Are there any comments from the board?
Well, so currently, when we have an event, we just put up signs wherever, however we want, right? I mean, is that the way it works now?
No. I mean, no. I mean, currently, right now, when we have, you mean, village events?
Yeah.
Village-sponsored events? Yes. Short answer is yes.
And everybody else has to get a permit. Anybody else that would have an event?
Right now, they're not allowed if you want to put it in public right-of-way, or, and that's what this is considering, is do you want to allow? Right now, it's currently illegal.
Except for the villages, I suppose.
Right. For a private event.
Trustee Bond and I had talked about this a little bit the other day. I think we would want to be cautious to the language. But I do support the idea that, it's something that we all talked about at divisioning, is that we want the community to have more events. And when there is a community-wide sponsored event, and I wouldn't want to deter people from that by saying, "No, you can't advertise for it," but permit it, and with the proper approach, I don't think that it's outside the realm. What I don't want to have is, you know, Joe's having a football party, that kind of thing. So, let staff kind of work out the details. But I like the idea of promoting community organizations to host events in our town.
As part of this, are we going to do what a definition is of a community event?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what we have to look at. I mean, because one of the questions would be, "Does it need to be sponsored by an organization as opposed to a private individual?" So, if someone in your subdivision's having, you know...
A block party?
Block party.
Jamie's golden birthday party extravaganza.
Yeah. Versus the HOA holding an event, you know?
I probably wouldn't attend, but, okay.
I would just caution about the number of signs.
Block parties are legal.
Because if it is a village event, you know, like the fest, because of all of our corridors, six might be a little limiting for our own signage if it were the fest or something like that. So, I'd just be cautious about the number.
And this is something, if you drafted, we could send, would go through Plan Commission, correct? Temporary signs?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I add a couple of comments? The mental image you get of a sign is like a yard sign, and that is part of the discussion here. But... But we have, for example, been looking at a program called Little Free Libraries, that are small sharing-type facilities, where you bring a book, you take a book. And those are ideally situated in someone's lawn, or in a playground, or in a common area. While that's not a classic sign, I think there's no ordinance language that would allow that kind of use right now. And I'm hoping that this might be a forum where we could do that. And the other thing I would mention is, for neighborhoods that are trying to do a newsletter, my own, for example, there are a thousand homes in our neighborhood. It would cost, in postage alone, five hundred dollars to send out a newsletter. But using the free take-one boxes that you see with realty signs and the like, in pathways, and walkways, and common areas, those newsletters can be distributed at a very low cost. And they keep people informed about events or activities important to that neighborhood. So whatever you might call a free take-one box, that would, to me, fit nicely in this arena as well. And is a community-building effort that would make sense to me to encourage. I found the first neighborhood news that we did in Foxmore Fairfield Way, was June of two thousand nine, so we've been doing neighborhood newsletters in the free take-one boxes for four years now. The very first issue talked about Neighborhood Watch Group being formed. Thank you to Lakeshore Litter pickup volunteers, births, deaths, marriages in the subdivisions. And we've gone for four years now with regular distribution of this as best we could. And to me, that helped pull our subdivisions together into more of a community. It's not, we're not competing with the Ledger Sentinel, or the Beacon News, but we are trying to talk to ourselves and bring ourselves together as a community.
It sounds like there's support for this, so I would be suggesting that staff research and recommend taking your comments, or if you have any to add in the meantime, to take a recommendation to the November Plan Commission. So we'd be looking at November before it would get back to the board.
I like the good intent of the idea. I think that we, there's going to, inevitably, someone's going to either bend the rules, or try and find some way around this, and do something that it wasn't intended for. I would, as part of my comments, I guess, let the Plan Commission know that they've got to be very specific in their definitions of what is allowed and what's not allowed.
I agree with you, the temporary means temporary, doesn't mean twenty days out of thirty days, and then next month you got something else. And as far as this ordinance goes with Barrington, I mean, they can put up polo party at the farms, and they can put four at each corner for one weekend. It's entirely different than all of a sudden the Girl Scouts say, we're all selling cookies, and they put up signs, Girl Scout Cookie Week, or something. I mean, there's a big difference in that. Pete and I have tried to keep the signs out of Montgomery, and we've, you know, we've got it down now where there's not a lot of them. And I just hate to see signs in every right-of-way for something that isn't really constructive.
Yes, currently, our ordinance regulates, if somebody wanted to put them on private property, they still couldn't, correct?
No, you can on your own property.
Only for the two types.
We would still only be, I believe, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, only be looking at private property. We would not recommend that any signs be permitted on village-owned property or the right-of-way.
Okay, excellent. All right, so we'll have a discussion about this at some point later this year.
Yes, we'll take the comments we've received so far, try and reconcile them. I think some of them conflict with each other, but we'll work on that. If you have any comments in the meantime, any additional ones, please send them to Jamie or myself, and we'll bring it to the Plan Commission, and then back to you.
And just to jump in about the Little Free Library, that's something that we have been talking about. So if you can, make sure that that's kind of looked at. That's kind of a unique situation, or a unique, pretty cool thing that they're doing now, so.
What happens when it rains, though?
It's, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
It's enclosed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to ordinance updates, and again, back to Jamie.
Thank you, this is sort of what I'm going to call the easy updates that the staff is recommending. We're kind of looking at just some changes that are going to clean up some various areas for code enforcement, in order to clarify and/or things that we've run into that create a challenge. And so we kind of have brought them forward in a couple of rounds, and there's some more policy-type decision ones that'll be coming in the future. But the idea here is that we would kind of run the concepts by you, and then if you're generally supportive of them, we would just move forward, bringing the change to you and putting them through. You'll see as we go through them, there, some of them are relatively straightforward and pretty simple. The first one, the sump pump discharge, this just tweaks language in our ordinance that would require sump pumps to be discharged into storm sewers where the storm sewers are available. So in our newer subdivisions, where there may be a discrepancy in the annexation agreement that doesn't require it, we're just going to tweak the language. And as I note here, all of our current homeowners are already doing this. So this isn't a current issue, we're just be making sure that in the future, it's required by ordinance. The second one is a vacant property administrative fee for weeds and grass. This has come up and is becoming more of a trend in the field, in terms of when, this is when we lean a property that we cut, we cut the grass on. So it's generally vacant bank-owned property, or property where the weeds and grass are out of control, that we would, we already do charge back legal fees for, that are incurred. But what we would be looking at doing would be actually adding our own administrative fee for the cost of our staff time on this. So we would look at working with our finance director, Justin, to look at how much would be an appropriate amount to charge back. But basically, this would be a fee increase, but it's mostly on vacant homes and banks, so it doesn't hit residents, and it can be a deterrent for cutting grass. So that's the idea behind that one. The third one actually just clarifies that we don't allow astroturf. This has been an issue in a few places, where people are kind of laying down grass that we maybe feel isn't appropriate. We do note that in the actual language here, we would potentially build in some exceptions for things like spongy child-friendly systems, well-drained surfaces, and if Engineer Wallers gets his way, putting greens. The third, the fourth one is snowplowed blade storage in residential districts. This has been an issue with snowplow blades that get kind of dropped in front of the garages and are left out. We don't have very strong language to prohibit that. So basically, we would be clarifying that they can't store them out there, and they would need to move them into the garage. The three, the fifth one, this one would also be a zoning ordinance change, so it would go to Plan Commission. But currently, the zone, it basically tightens the language regarding commercial signs in residential neighborhoods. So this is your daycare sign, you know, call me, daycare available, some other commercial-type signs that end up in people's front yards advertising. And we would basically be saying that this isn't allowed unless, you know, it's political, or there's a tradesman working. So the negative impacts on this one is basically that residents wouldn't be allowed to advertise their home business in their yard. So if you have a photographer in your neighborhood, this would be one that would potentially impact them, that they couldn't put up the signs that say, you know, photographer. And then the last one is probably of the ones that I'm discussing, one that would require the most kind of thought by the board. And it talks about the recreational vehicles on gravel surfaces. So the change would state that gravel's not an acceptable surface to park vehicles on. So to park RVs or boats on gravel. And clarify that basically it has to be continuous pavement, or a continuously paved surface under the vehicle. So the repercussions of that are that, if you think of any of your neighbors that are parking boats or wreck vehicles in their yards, and they have gravel, they would have to pave, which means they would have to come in for a permit and be subject to the lot coverage. The reason why we're recommending this is because it is mostly an aesthetic recommendation, that we have issues with grass growing, or vehicles that get parked with the gravel, and it kind of like fading, and then it looking poorly. So that's one where this would also potentially impact a business that has gravel, and has, say, outdoor storage on that gravel. They would be required to pave in order to store vehicles. So this is one that we just wanted you to be aware of, that although we do want to recommend it, you could potentially be faced with a resident who is now facing the cost to pave for their storage. So if that's one that you maybe don't want to do right-of-way, that would be an option for you as well, if you want to keep that one for a further discussion.
Some of these are on the book now. That RV, that's been on the book for a long time, I know of. And cutting somebody's grass, if we, they don't pay for it, we hire somebody, and we put a lien against their property.
Correct, we do do that.
Collect an additional fee for the time we spend, over and above the cost of mowing.
Okay, but you're putting just about the fee in there.
Right.
Because a lot of these, we already have on the book.
Right, we're just trying to strengthen them, or clarify them more.
I think our policy on the gravel surfaces has been to not allow them, correct?
That's correct.
There is an exception, an exception in the ordinance for, just for recreational vehicles. Past that, our ordinance states, if you, you know, build or construct any new location for any turning, movement of vehicles, et cetera, you have to either pave via asphalt or concrete. But this is a small exception that is in the rules, that dates back sometime. So that's what we're really trying to clarify and clear up.
I'm confused by that, too. I have neighbors that build a concrete third area for their boat, or their RV. How could we require them to do that and tell somebody else that gravel's okay?
If they placed a concrete or asphalt surface next to their home, then they most likely did that by choice, and that, of course, requires a permit. Now, as it sits currently, you have the option of whether you do a paver surface, an asphalt surface, a concrete surface, or a gravel surface. And we're looking to decrease those options, take out the gravel surface. And we also have a few areas where people will just place single pavers underneath the tires of their boat, and say, oh, look, I have a paver surface there. And so that's what we're trying to strengthen also, by adding, it needs to be a contiguous surface. It needs to be underneath the entire recreational vehicle.
Now, this grandf, this folks that have had their RV parked next to their, are they grandfathered in?
Well, that's tricky, because as our attorney would say, they technically would be until they moved the vehicle, at which point they would be required to pave. So the short answer is no, they would not be grandfathered.
I was under the impression that anything with a motor on it, or that had lubricants or fluids, you don't want that percolating down through the ground. And that was the reason for a relatively impermeable surface. Am I on the right track with that?
I don't know, but I like it.
I think a lot of it was even campers, the pop-up campers. I think the whole idea was if it's a motor home, a motor home, if you throw gravel down, it's not called grass anymore, and they could get away with it. It's been like that for, you know, years. And I think this is what they're saying, is it's got to be blacktop now, or concrete.
That's right.
And that's, it does improve it, because a lot of them put that camper there, and it's never moved, period. They may not even go away that year, so.
And I'm guessing that in your case, your neighbors, that it might be an HOA regulation? Because your HOA probably isn't going to allow them to put gravel there, and park a vehicle in it.
That could, that could be.
Your newer subdivisions.
Yeah, it could be.
I would think they would have some covenant on that.
I'm talking about the older ones, that they've been like that for years, just finished.
I haven't heard any comments on the first, one, two, three, four, or five at this point. Are there any objections to those? I think we can move forward with those, Denny?
Astroturf, what, you mean somebody really wanted to put astroturf in their backyard? That's hard to believe, the cost.
Yeah, you know, we've had issues where they put it down, they let their dogs go to the bathroom on it for a week, they roll it up, throw it out, like, in their backyards. So we just want to, we're just trying to, I mean, this is, it's rare when it actually happens. But I think the idea is that in the events where people are trying to put down astroturf, except for the exceptions where there might be a legitimate, you know, putting green developed, or something that would be appropriate, that we might allow. But just generally, if you have astroturf, it's probably not, you know, not something we want to encourage.
The other thing I want to talk about is that sump pump discharge. The people that were here tonight, I bet a lot of them got sump pumps, and they pump them into the yard. And a lot of the old towns, you'll have sump pumps that go, that's a high cost to turn around and say, okay, you got to do it in a. I had a house on Harmony where the water went right underneath the house when they built it, and they didn't know it. So my only, and if I pumped it into the backyard, I'm pumping it into my own backyard, and it'd just come right back in underneath the house. So I ended up, and it was costly, of putting pipe all the way to the street. And then it went out in the street with gubs, or curbs and gutters, and down the water went. And it's still working, and it's still there. And at that time, it was legal, because I checked into it, because it's, you're really not pumping in. But if everybody has to do that, I had to go through the wall of my basement, my crawl space and everything, and it was expensive to do, and I only did it because I had no choice. But these people here, I'm sure are pumping it out, and it's, there's no street, no curbs and gutters to put it on where it goes down.
We'd be looking at new construction.
New construction only, and only where there's an existing connection. So if there was a lot, per se, that wasn't, like, let's say, the lot next to Village Hall, we were going to build a new home, and there wasn't a sump pump readily available, staff would have the discretion not to require the connection, that's my understanding.
Okay, I think it's safe to assume the first five we can move forward with. There's some hesitation on the, do you have something?
On number five?
On number five, commercial signs in residential neighborhoods, go ahead.
I recognize this is a tender area, but I also think we need to recognize that this era that we're in now is one of many people working from home, either by choice or by necessity. And we have people who are running licensed daycare facilities from their home, there are several in our neighborhood. We have licensed beauticians who have set up salons in their home. And to tell a roofer that he can put up a sign while he's maybe from some town I've never heard of, and to tell our own residents that, no, you may not promote your profession, tax accounting, or your business in your own yard, is troublesome. I don't think that's quite right. So there must be some balance here that we could achieve, that would avoid annoying the neighborhood, but would also allow someone who's doing childcare to let their neighbors know that that's a licensed daycare facility.
And this is one of those topics that would go through Plan Commission, correct?
Yeah, the commercial sign one would, yes.
I would agree with Stan's comments, the first four I have no problem with, but I'd like to see more discussion on item number five.
Okay.
And if I may, just a point of clarification also, this, you're correct, Trustee Bond, this really does look at the, more or less, the yard signs. You are allowed, under the home occupation portion of the zoning ordinance, to put a sign on your house. However, now that is only a one-square-foot sign, so it's very small. But it is allowed, and maybe that is something that could be discussed, and maybe that is the area that you'd like to broaden the ordinance in.
These people that pop up the signs for the re-roofing, how long does Mike allow them to keep up? But most of the time, it looks like it's at least a week.
That's a very good question, I'm not sure what the enforcement timeframe on that is. I believe that the ordinance states it has to be basically during the time that they're re-roofing.
Although I will. Although I will clarify, we, we don't have people actively out on weekends or in the afternoons looking at this type of stuff.
Because there's a lot of them out there after it's done. And Aurora, when I drive around, they'll put up signs, pet, you know, "Bring your pet, we'll, we'll fix that," I mean, they got signs all over the place in Aurora, and I think they just put them up and you, eventually, there, somebody catches them, but they got signs for everything. I mean, it's just, it doesn't look real good sometimes.
Okay.
So, one through four, move forward. Five, send to Plan Commission for more discussion with the other temporary sign stuff, and then number six, maybe we'll bring back to discuss at a future meeting with you with.
Alright, with that, we'll, Jared, move on to Plan Commission recommendations, and I'll turn it over to Planner Chipman, Senior Planner Chipman, sorry.
Thank you, President Brawley. This evening, I'd like to discuss with you an item that the Plan Commission discussed that will be placed before you on Monday's board meeting. The Plan Commission recommended seven to zero in favor of amending the zoning ordinance in regards to the height of buildings, the allowable height of buildings in the manufacturing districts. So, the recommendation really stems around maintaining our 45-foot maximum height within 500 feet of residential properties. Therefore, you have somewhat of a transition. And then, after that 500-foot buffer, you're looking to go up to 65 feet high in the M1 district and 90 feet high in the M2 district. Now, at the Plan Commission, it was, it was great to have Chief Tom Myers from the Montgomery Countryside Fire Protection District there to confirm that he would be able to fight a 90-foot-tall building fire. So, that was excellent information. Another reason we went with 65 feet for the M1 district is because many of the building categories in the building code are only allowed at a maximum height of 65 feet. So, that was, was what we were going for. Staff has been approached by a manufacturer, the Trio Foundry, and they are looking at potentially adding on to their building, and their equipment is large enough that it would exceed our current standard, and that's what prompted our research and the recommendation before you this evening. With that, I would ask if there are any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, I, I think you can move forward with that on the consent for Monday's meeting. And lastly, department updates.
Chief Myers.
Thank you very much. Our new candidate, Paul Michael Leichcheck, has passed all his testing requirements for patrol officer. Tomorrow night at 4:30, we will be having a police commission meeting at the Village Montgomery Police Department. He is currently working at Alsop, Illinois, as a community service officer. He is scheduled to go to the academy on September 29th, that Sunday. First day of class will be September 30th. Thank you, that's all I have.
Director Pobins?
Thank you. Several things. Trustee Marisak had passed along a request for a stop sign at Maple Ridge Lane and Hickory Ridge Drive in Arbor Ridge subdivision. I went out and did two site visits, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. These are two-hour visits. We count traffic, we mark the movements to see if it meets the warrants for stop sign placement, and in this particular case, it did not. There's a little bit more traffic in the evenings, going north-south primarily, but we didn't witness any vehicle conflicts or pedestrian conflicts that would take it to that level. So, I just wanted to inform the board that request came in. We've researched it, and we'll respond to the, to the request, or I'll work with Trustee Marisak on that, if you'd like to, or I can. Secondly, we had a request, or we were notified that there was a dead tree in the Fieldstone Place SSA Basin. That tree was removed this morning. So, again, just for your information, in case some of you have been contacted by residents on that. The public works staff continues water main, or water main flushing. We're in the second of three weeks. We're primarily in Boulder Hill. We are going to avoid the areas that are currently under construction with the new water main, and as you remember, have had significant rust, rusty water problems in the past, so we're going to avoid that area, try to get through this construction, and then we'll pick up flushing again on next cycle. We'll do flushing as we tie in the new mains, but, and then next week, they'll be moving out west, west of Orchard Road. So, if you live out in the western side of town, next week, your mains will be flushed. And lastly, we're working with Superior Excavating to get a quote to install two auto flushers. These were budgeted items, and they were in response to rust complaints on Jefferson Street, which dead-ends at the east end, and Helene Rider, which is out in the Belmaray subdivision. It does not dead-end, but when you look at the entire map of the villages, President Brawley said, it's such a long system that it's effectively a dead-end, because there are very few users. So, we'll be installing, we purchased the auto flushers directly there at the Public Works Building. We're gonna work with Superior Excavating to have those installed, I would say, within the next month, would be a good target. So, that's all I have.
Director Van Vorn?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. And Assistant Administrator Ludovic?
Thank you for attending the Comprehensive Plan Visioning Workshop. The Community Character Assessment is available online, so if you haven't had a chance to check that out, do so. And then, just very quickly, the Oktoberfest 5K and 10K run is coming up on October 5th. So, if you haven't registered for that yet, feel free to do that and get the word out. It's always a great event, and we're excited about it. Thank you.
Their updates. Excellent. Is there any new or unfinished business to come before the board this evening?
I have a couple of items.
Alright, Trustee Bond?
I have received, I think, three comments now about what appears to be band noise from Aurora events spilling into Montgomery. One was a resident on Jericho Road, one was a resident on Marsh Avenue, and that's just a presumption that that's what it is, but if this is becoming an issue that affects our residents, it may be appropriate at some point to reach out to Aurora and suggest that they keep their sound level at a point where it's not infringing into Montgomery. I, the complaints I got said that it was going into the bedtime for young kids territory, 8:30 to 9:30, and it, I know that that kind of sound can travel, but I, if residents start reaching out to us, it's probably worth thinking about. And I did receive a complaint as well about the Aurora Blacktop property. It appears now that there are some items being stored there that are going beyond the mulching operation that I think we granted a special use for. There, and there appears to be a lot of logging involved. Now, I had the impression that we were talking about storing mulch, not manufacturing it there, and that there are some large tanks now on that property as well. So, being mindful that that was a temporary special use, I'm a little concerned that maybe that use is drifting beyond what we had as a board envisioned.
And I know that staff is aware of that, and we'll be checking into that, and we'll report back to the board on that one, so. Excellent. Is there anything else? There's one item that I was gonna bring up. On the agenda for Monday night's evening was an ordinance to talk about the liquor sales hours. I know it's something we've talked about before. Just wanted to kind of get a consensus from the board, if that's something that we should plan to discuss at that meeting, or if you wanted to see a draft ordinance. The issue at hand is that we got the request from the VFW to allow liquor sales at 10:00 a.m., and we granted that. Then, we got a request from basically the rest of the residents in town that we do the same. You guys saw the comparables, our neighboring towns, almost all of them are 10, 10:00 in the morning, and we're still at noon on Sundays. So, is there an opinion on the board, whether we move forward with that or not, or do you want to talk about it on Monday night?
For Sundays, just when they have the football games on, isn't it? I thought that's what was in there.
That was for the VFW.
Yeah, but I think that ordinance was Sundays.
Yeah.
Yeah, their, their request was for, just during football season, but it didn't seem to make sense to try and write it that way, so it just became Sundays, and now the other...
This would do the same for the, for the businesses that have the Class A license.
Because our current, you can purchase it at Walmart or any place that's a carryout. You just can't on-premise consume it.
Correct.
So, any restaurant wants to serve Bloody Marys, not until noon on Sundays.
Correct.
I think the VFW is different, because they have a lot of people just come in, like club members, and, and I think a lot of your restaurants, I've talked to a couple owners, they're not interested in 10 o'clock, because a lot of them aren't even open then, but as far as the bar type. But at 11, they say that's a possibility, because then a guy will come in and have a drink and stay to eat at noon, where if he doesn't, he'll go eat somewhere else and then come in later, after 12. So, they said, "We can see the 11, but we wouldn't push for the 10."
And I, I never gave this much consideration. I happen to be over at Bristol Tap, and actually a comment was made to me by Joe, the owner. He was not very happy about the fact that we changed ours, because all of the VFW folks used to go there before the VFW opened. So, he's not, so it actually was impacting our business here in town, that they're going to another town and consuming, you know, and giving their business to somebody else.
Our plan was to put this on the agenda for Monday. If you feel you're leaning towards allowing it, or think you'll come to a decision, we would put it on items for separate action. If you feel you're gonna need more time to discuss, we would just put it under items for discussion, I guess. So, that's our, our question to you. Can we put it under items for separate action?
I, I would say separate action, in my opinion.
That would give the public a chance to comment if they have comments to make.
Okay. We will do that for Monday, then.
Could our police chief also get us, it was a nice, an A, B, C, D, E, F, G, whatever we got, like, could you also put, get us something on what an A license is, what a B license is, what each one is?
Absolutely. I'll have that for your notes this Friday.
Okay, thank you.
I asked the attorney a question as well. Is there a limitation for liquor sales near a church, for example, the poor boys situation?
From memory, I can't tell you exactly. There are limitations sometimes on establishments near a school, that I do know. I don't recall whether there's anything in the state statute with respect to location by a church, but I don't, I don't believe so, but I, we can find out for you.
I defer to the board, but I would hate to pass an ordinance that's in conflict with some other kind of existing statute.
I know he's had other issues, like at poor boys, but most of them are, by the landlord's been grandfathered, because he's been there a long time, and they sometimes aren't even there on Sunday. They use other nights that they conjugate there.
Okay. We'll look at that. If there's no other comment, there's no executive session this evening, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move. Second.
Moved in second by Trustee Youngerman. Take the role, please.
Trustee Myers?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.